I call this meeting to order. Let's see. Would one of you robotic warriors be willing to come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lister, here. Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmember Judge.
Here.
Mayor Protem Rhodes.
Here.
Mayor Thomas.
Here. Are there any items for a gender review? Any none?
Mr. Mayor, I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only and all further reading be waived.
Second.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
If any member of the city council may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration on any matter on this agenda, he or she should so declare at this time. Seeing none.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the first item on the agenda is item 1D1, Presentation of a Proclamation Declaring the Month of May 2024 as Older Americans' Month. An Office Specialist Candace Gray is here to present this item and accepting the proclamation is Pete Stone.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the city council. This evening, I would like to have Pete Stone come forward to accept the proclamation designating May as Older Americans' Month. This year's Older Americans' Month theme, Powered by Connection, emphasizes the importance of relationships, networks, and support systems in enhancing the lives of our seniors. It is with great pleasure that I read the proclamation. Whereas, the city of Simi Valley includes an increasing number of older Americans who make the quality of life in our city even better through their connections forged in the workplace and as volunteers on boards, committees, and for service organizations. And whereas, the city of Simi Valley is home to over 20,000 residents 65 years of age or better and is committed to engaging and supporting older adults, their families, and caregivers. And whereas, the city of Simi Valley is dedicated to providing opportunities that promote well-being for seniors and help them to thrive, be financially stable, and remain in their community. And whereas, the city of Simi Valley believes in promoting home and community-based services that provide older Americans with vital supplemental nutrition to address food insecurity and promote self-advocacy. And whereas, the city of Simi Valley is dedicated to ensuring that all older Americans in our community, especially the frail elderly, receive the resources and services to continue to live in a supportive and dignified manner. And whereas, the city of Simi Valley recognizes the 2024 Older Americans' Month theme, Powered by Connection, which emphasizes the profound impact of meaningful interactions and social connection on the well-being and health of older adults in our community. Now, therefore, the month of May 2024 is hereby proclaimed Older Americans' Month in the city of Simi Valley in recognition of the wealth of life experience and wisdom that older Americans make to our city. Presented the sixth day of May 2024.
Well, I hate being called an older American, but this represents a big part of our city as our growing senior population is becoming the largest age group in the city. Congratulations. Thank you.
First of all, thank you for the proclamation. And I want to invite anybody over 50, but it's really open to everybody in town. We have our annual health fair on May 15th. It's a Wednesday, 8:00 AM to noon. It's going to be the best one ever. We have tons of screenings. Just about every vendor you can think of that pertains to the health of seniors is going to be there. So if you're someone, you're all invited. We'd love to have you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 1D2, Presentation of a Proclamation Declaring May 15, 2024, as Peace Officers Memorial Day. And Police Chief Short is presenting this item and accepting the proclamation is Assistant Chief John Adamczak.
Mayor Thomas and members of the city council, the city of Simi Valley has issued a proclamation declaring May 15, 2024, Peace Officers Memorial Day, and Assistant Chief Adams will accept it on behalf of the police department. Assistant Chief Adams worked for the El Paso Police Department, the U.S. Border Patrol, and LAPD before joining the Simi Valley Police Department on August 15, 1994. As an officer, he worked assignments in the patrol unit and special operations unit and also served on the department SWAT team in 2004. I beg your pardon. And also served on the department SWAT team. In 2004, he was promoted to sergeant and worked in the patrol, traffic, auxiliary services, and detective units. John promoted to commander in January 2022 and promoted again in April 2023 to the rank of assistant police chief. As the assistant police chief, he is responsible for the operations division as well as day-to-day activities within police administration. Peace Officers Memorial Day serves as a tribute to Simi Valley Police Officer Michael Clark and all of our nation's law enforcement officers who have paid so high a price protecting the freedoms that we enjoy every day. It is also a reminder to all of us who are all called to this profession that our commitment and dedication are recognized and appreciated by the citizens of the communities we serve. It is now my privilege to read the proclamation. Whereas, peace officers throughout the United States pursuant to their sworn duty to safeguard lives and property place their lives on the line to maintain public order daily. And each year, hundreds of peace officers are either slain or injured in their attempt to protect and serve their communities. And whereas, in 1962, President John F. Kennedy, in conjunction with Congress, first proclaimed May 15 as National Peace Officers Memorial Day in recognition of the law enforcement professionals killed or injured while protecting the lives and property of American citizens. And whereas, it is desirable and necessary to remind the community members of these officers, sacrifices, and to support those who day and night stand guard to protect all citizens through enforcement of the law. And whereas, the tragic loss of Officer Michael Clark on August 4, 1995 will forever endow a special and very personal meaning upon Peace Officers Memorial Day for our community and its police officers. Now, therefore, in recognition of those officers who regularly risk their lives and those who have sacrificed their lives in the line of duty, Wednesday, May 15, 2024, is hereby proclaimed Peace Officers Memorial Day in the city of Simi Valley to encourage all citizens to join in the recognition of these officers and order the flags at all city facilities to be flown at half-staff as a visible sign of our tribute. Presented on this sixth day of May 2024.
I'm going to simply say it's important that we do take the time to remember those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in protecting their communities, including Michael Clark, who did that, protecting our community. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 1D3 and 1D4, Presentation of Certificates of Commendation to Team 986A Lancers of Grace High School for Design Award VEX Robotics California State and World Championships. And Senior Management Analyst Heidi DiNardo is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the city council. Tonight, we come together to celebrate the outstanding accomplishments of Team 986A Lancers from Grace High School. In the realm of robotics, their achievements at both the VEX California State Championship and the VEX Robotics World Championship stand as a testament to their exceptional talent, hard work, and dedication. At the California State Competition held in Los Angeles on March 16, 2024, Team 986A's exemplary performance earned them the Precedent's Design Award, recognizing their systemic approach to engineering design, project management, and teamwork. Their meticulous documentation of the robot design process, coupled with their effective communication and teamwork, left a lasting impression on the judges. This achievement marks the 14th consecutive year that Grace would send at least one robotics team to the world championships, which speaks volumes about their unwavering commitment to innovation and collaboration. The Lancers went on to compete at the VEX Robotics World Championships held in Dallas, Texas from April 25 to April 27, consisting of 820 teams from more than 40 nations, competing in the game Spin-Up, which is robot frisbee golf, to try and claim the title of world champs. There were 10 divisions of 80 teams, and Team 986A won one of 10 awards per division, yielding an impressive overall record of 6 to 4, along with the well-deserved receipt of the Create Award. This accolade underscores their ability to devise creative engineering solutions to the challenges posed by this season's game. I've also been told that is the highest award that you can receive. Better than amazing, which was last year, I was just told. Team 986A has consistently showcased their excellence on a global scale, solidifying their reputation as perennial contenders in the field of robotics. These students have worked incredibly hard to achieve their goals and represent the future as innovators and leaders, and we are all impressed. Students and team mentors, please come forward as I read your names so we may recognize your efforts. Serving as Sergeant at Arms for the Simi Valley Youth Council, a little plug, for four years, Ian Nelson, which is robotics team captain, programmer, CAD designer, driver, builder, engineering notebook lead, and online challenge lead; Nicholas Villa, which is documenter, builder, scout, coach, pit crew, and online challenge lead; Jacob Patton, head builder, coach, scout; Gavin Willis, the builder, coach, and scout; and then we'd like to recognize Cecily Nelson as the builder, I'm sorry, as the robotics mentor; Jake Mattel, the robotics club faculty advisor; Sandra Marin, the logistics mentor; and Lauren Stemke, event partner.
Well, I've seen these guys in action, and I was impressed. I mean, I was really impressed. I know they're all really smart, but watching them in action, I had no idea what to expect. And I mean, it really is incredible. Would you like to talk about it a little bit?
Yeah. I've been saying. A video we can show out off too, from our state championship.
Okay, great. I'm going to press play, everyone.
Sure. I can even narrate it like a sports commentator.
Okay, perfect.
So, VEX Robotics, it's kind of like a sport. As you can see right here, this is the autonomous period. For the first 15 seconds of a match, the robots are driving themselves. There is no user input, and they're literally trying to score as many balls into the goal as possible. There's two teams, red and blue, and their goal is to get as many points as possible. Each team is made up of two alliances by two randomly selected teams as they play multiple matches throughout a tournament. So, for example, we're over here, we're 986A, we're Alliance of 1461A, we're over here. This was actually probably the most average match we can have. You can see us loading the balls through the goal, and we're trying to dribble it as fast as we can into the goal because it's a game about speed and chess decisions. So essentially, kind of like rock, paper, scissors, you might want to defend someone from scoring. You might want to steal someone's ball while they're trying to score, or you might want to try scoring really, really fast. In this match, we had mechanical failures, but we still won, which was really cool because one of our right wings that essentially makes it like a plow to shove it into the goal broke in the middle of the match, and we were still able to win. So you can kind of see us fumbling around, trying to score as many balls as possible. There's a random wing that's popped out for no reason, and people are trying to play defense on us. Now, this is not like soccer, sort of. There's 44 balls instead of one, and you can score as many goals as you want within a period. Right here, you can see we're trying to block them while also trying to put a try balls into our own robot. So that way, they're forced to be really slow while we can score all three of these try balls, which you'll see us do right here. That actually one push won us the entire match. So it's a really, really interesting game. In past years, like she mentioned, we've played Spin-Up, which was giant, just a bunch of frisbee golf robots where you're throwing it across the field, trying to stop each other. It's awesome. And every single year, the game changes, so we can't just use the same robot at every single competition. If you have a successful season, we're building robots for about 11 months straight. The second that this game ended at Worlds, we then had to watch the new video for a new game and build a completely new robot. So I'm a senior. I won't be able to play next year's game, which is too confusing to explain. But these three, if we can give a round of applause for them, they've been sophomores, and they've been doing excellent. And they're going to hopefully continue the legacy for Grace going forward. So this match right here, you can see it's super close, kind of hard to tell. There's these random pulls right here, as you can see. VEX likes to do little gimmicks to make their robots look cool. So at the end of a match, robots are allowed to do pull-ups essentially on the bar. And if you're able to have a pull-up by the end of the match without touching the ground, you get extra points. So all these robots are designed to be able to do that, which leads us to our Worlds bot. So that's our state bot. This is our Worlds bot. It does a few really, really cool things. First, that's a try ball. I should probably go grab that. Try balls are really chaotic in nature. I forgot the exact reason why, but mathematically, you cannot predict how these things roll. So if I were to roll this on the ground pretty much the same way, it will completely spin in different directions, which is really cool. We try to mitigate that by using a lot of compression on our intake, which essentially makes it so we can roll it really precisely but with a lot of traction. We also have a puncher right here. People are dribbling the try balls in this game, but technically, you don't have to dribble. You can shoot across the field. So I might as well show you. We can do a little demonstration. So this robot right here, we're going to have Gavin grab a try ball, and we're going to match load it. It won't go too far. We made sure we nerfed it so it wouldn't hurt anyone. Okay, this puncher right here can shoot try balls across. Pretty simple. So you could do that, but we realized mathematically that's super unsafe because if you're able to shoot a try ball across the field, your opponents might just be able to steal it, and you just wasted one of your try balls that you had. So people realized that dribbling was the best technique. I don't think VEX, which is the company that designs the game, intended for that to happen. They wanted people to build shooters. They wanted to have on all their advertising, "Look how fast these robots shoot across the field. Look at how fast they're scoring." And then turned into a game of literally the most simple motion of just push the try ball across the field. This also has a transmission, which is pretty complicated. To do a pull-up on the bar, this is actually essentially a pull-up mechanism that grabs onto the bar. It has a winch connected to a six-motor transmission, which essentially just pulls it in. There was a second stage to this, which could get on a higher level of the bar, but we had to take it off at Worlds because we didn't need to use it. Frankly, it didn't matter in any of our matches. But yeah, and then also, as we were talking about earlier, we have these giant wings on the side, which we have zip-tied in. But these wings can pop out to essentially be 36 inches in length, and they help us be a shield, and they also help us score balls really, really effectively. So there's a lot of strategy that goes into this game. I mean, Gavin, he's been doing research, watching the games for like the last 10 months, trying to figure out the best way to play. Nick has been taking over the logbook, which you should probably grab and show it off for a quick. And then we got Jake, who's been super awesome for match loading, and you see him over here. We can only introduce try balls in this corner right here, and that has to be practiced. Like, to be able to drop the try balls fast enough where our opponents can't steal it and we can dribble it across is a skill. So people like Gavin, like a sport, and Gavin and Jake have to literally practice this. So VEX Robotics is awesome. And yeah, I just like to show. But the reason we won the Design Award at Worlds is our documentation as engineers. You're not going to win every single tournament. Your robot might fall apart. You might have unfair opponents because it's completely random. You might have horrible teammates because it's completely random. But the one thing you can control is how good of an engineer and how honest and how much documentation you could put into it. So when we pride ourselves at Grace as kind of a little bit of a secret weapon, we teach coding classes, and we also have CAD classes now where we can show off how we design our systems. For example, for a ramp that we had at state, we had a complete CAD model for how the pneumatics would work and open up a trap door. We document that. We learn how to build it, and stuff like that, most teams can't do. Being able to show your design process and why it's important is super important in robotics, but it's also super important in life because you make sure you think critically when you're going through a problem. So yeah, I'm really proud of this team, and I'm really proud that this is my last year and we ended off with a bang. So yeah, I'm thankful to Mr. Mattel, my mom, and all my parents, and all my teammates for being awesome this year. And yeah, thank you all so much.
Well, congratulations on all you did, and I'm telling you, this is, it looks like a game, but this is engineering, and it's far above high school level, in my opinion. So very good, very good job, guys.
And Ian is off to UCLA, my alma mater. I just want to commend Ian for all he's done and his accomplishments. Great job, team.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 4, Public Statements. And we do not have any public comment cards for this item this evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is item 7, the Consent Calendar. And there is one resolution for your consideration this evening. Consent item 5, Resolution Number 2024-10, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley Amending the Fiscal Year 2024-25 Budget to Incorporate a List of Projects Funded by Senate Bill 1, SB 1, for Fiscal Year 2024-25, Cycle 8. for Fiscal Year 2024-25, Cycle 8, the Road Repair and Accountability Act.
I'll move approval of the Consent Calendar.
Second.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Well done.
Mr. Mayor, Members of City Council, the next item on the agenda is Item 8A, A Public Meeting to Receive Comments Regarding the Renewal of the Simi Valley Tourism Marketing District and Introduction of an Ordinance. The reading of the ordinance is as follows. Ordinance Number 1356, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley, Adding Chapter 3-7 Tourism Marketing District to the Simi Valley City Code Renewing the Simi Valley Tourism Marketing District. And Assistant City Manager Linda Swan is here to present this item.
Well, good evening, Mayor Thomas and City Council. Just gonna pull up this quick slide. Okay. On April 15th, 2024, the City Council received petitions from all of the established local lodging businesses and adopted a resolution of intention declaring its intent to renew the Simi Valley Marketing Tourism District for a 10-year term. So there are a series of steps that the City Council must take in order to renew the district. This evening, the city is holding a public meeting to receive comments regarding the renewal of the tourism district. And we're gonna introduce an ordinance, Ordinance Number 1356, to effectuate the district's renewal. And we will hold a public meeting on June 3rd to allow lodging businesses the opportunity to protest the renewal of the district. If less than 50% of the lodging businesses protest the district's renewal, then the City Council may forward and adopt a resolution of formation and conduct a second reading of the ordinance after the public hearing concludes. So staff recommends that you receive public testimony regarding the renewal of the district and introduce Ordinance 1356 to effectuate the renewal, and this concludes my report.
I would like to call for public comments on this item.
Mr. Mayor, we have no public comments for this item this evening.
Time for a motion? Mr. Mayor, I move to receive public testimony regarding the renewal of the Simi Valley Tourism Marketing District and introduce Ordinance Number 1356 to effectuate renewal of the district.
Second. Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, Members of City Council, the next item on the agenda is 9A, Consideration of an Unmanned Aerial System Program, Adoption of a Resolution Approving a Simi Valley Police Department Policy Statement Regarding the Use of Surveillance Technologies and an Operational Policy Manual for the Department, and Approve the Purchase of Unmanned Aerial Devices as Required by AB 481 and the City of Simi Valley, Ordinance Number 1342. The reading of the resolution is as follows. Resolution Number 2024-11, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley, Approving the Adoption of Simi Valley Police Department Policy 351, Unmanned Aerial Systems, UAS, Operations, and the Creation of the Police Department Unmanned Aircraft Systems, UAS, Program. And Sergeant Patrick Zajacek and Commander Dungen are here to present this item.
So we'd like to start with Marcus Cicero once said, "The safety of the people shall be the highest law", and that's what brings us here today as the police department. We are attempting to embrace technology into modern policing, and it's a technology that's congruent with our core values and our mission statement. When used with the proper amount of efficacy, this program will make us better, more efficient, safer, and help us serve the community more efficiently. My name is Patrick Zajacek, and I have the privilege to be here today to talk about a Simi Valley Police Department drone program for consideration. In terms of public acceptance, over 150 agencies in California currently have a drone program, 1,500 agencies nationwide, and over 50% of agencies in Ventura County currently have a drone program. Drone technology really started to take off in law enforcement around 2012, and since around 2019, the Simi Valley Police Department has conducted a thorough cost analysis, best practices, barriers, stakeholders. We've been working on this program for approximately five years in order to present that today with a lot of thought into it prior to getting here. So on the front end, what we've done so far is we have over 150 hours of drone program training. This includes best practices for implementing drone programs, drone and SWAT integration, crowd control in drones, to include community policing, best practices and practices to avoid. We currently have two certified FAA 107 pilots, which is mandatory for the use of drones in a police department capacity. We've attended multiple trainings with Ventura County and Oxnard Police Department and their drone teams, and our two pilots have over 200 hours of training and flight time so far. We've also collaborated with numerous agencies throughout California to include some of the real stakeholders in the drone industry, to include Chula Vista Police Department up north Alameda County, and more locally, Santa Monica and Beverly Hills as well. When it comes to drones, and this is much like the LPR technology that we talked about last year, what's really important is what it can be used for, but more importantly, what it won't be used for. So drone usage and criteria is your critical incidents, your calls for service needing immediate air support. Sometimes getting air support from other agencies has been problematic in the past and not very cost-effective. Suspect searches, fleeing suspects. I personally, my purview is property crimes right now. So in terms of residential burglaries, there's been times that we've had pursuits and people fleeing from vehicles and going into yards, open fields. This is something that would assist us in apprehending those suspects. SWAT deployments, hazmat situations, and also mobile field force overwatch. And that's in terms of your critical incidents. Other uses, traffic reconstruction, crime scene processing. To have that aerial view of traffic reconstruction is very helpful for our traffic unit, and unfortunately, we have a lot of accidents. Crime scene processing, we have had some outdoor crime scenes that we've had to rely on other agencies to come and capture for us. Middle picture, your missing hikers, your hurt hikers, your stranded bicyclists on Rocky Peak and the other terrain that we have and the great hiking trails that we have here in the city, that could assist with that as well. And then your large outdoor events as a kind of immediate response to any type of incident at those large events that we commonly host. Still holding out hope that we get Metallica here one year. All right, so as for what the drones won't be used for, which is very important, random surveillance, drones are not surveillance tools. They won't use, they, just like LPR, traffic violations. No one's gonna get a ticket from a drone or what a drone captures. Immigration's issue, no part of that. And anything in violation of Fourth Amendment without a search warrant. So there is specific search warrant language that you do get for drones. If you're serving a search warrantless state of residence, you would actually have language in there that would allow for drone usage on those. So that's what it won't be used for, which is very important. The next tier, the next ideation for this as well, if implemented, would be transparency and education, which has been discussed at length over the years. But it's very important to, starting here, to educate the public on what we'll use them for and what we won't. Educating internally, just so our people, our sergeants, our command staff, all the way down line level, know exactly what we can and can't use these for. Policy and flight logs, in terms of policy, that's posted directly on the website. And flight logs, Commander Dungen will go into a little bit later. But that's all integrated with our Axon through Axon Air, which anybody could see exactly where the drone flew, from where, and what it was flying to. So there's a lot of transparency built into the programs that we're hoping to utilize. And then also being transparent and having to push on social media to discuss what we're doing, how we're doing it, and also to include, and it's not on here, a community forum would be very helpful as well, where people could actually come out and look at the drones and discuss the concepts behind those drones as well. So in a nutshell, that is what we are hoping for consideration to implement a localized Simi Valley Police Department drone program. I wish I would have had time with the robotics unit prior to, because maybe they can build us some drones. But that would have been very helpful, but we are here to answer any questions you may have.
You don't have one here to demonstrate for us?
We haven't purchased any, because we need the thumbs up first.
Councilmember Lidster.
So I thank you for your presentation, and I do have some questions. In fact, to be very honest, this reminds me a little bit of the conversation when we were talking about body cameras and the technology involved and the possibilities, et cetera. And one of the similarities I thought of is that when that happened, we were not, we didn't do it immediately. There was a lot of research, and we let other people do a lot of trial and error. I think before you, we came in and came in with a wonderful product. And so I was interested to see that it's been, really, they've been in use for 10 years or more, locally or elsewhere. What has that achieved, the 10 years of other people doing that? What do you think that advantage it might be for us? That that's gone on before, has there been developments in the field? Are they more accurate? Are they, do we know who not to buy them from? I mean, I'm just a curiosity.
Yeah, and great question, and we do believe this issue is ripe right now. The next, some of the major players in the drone industry, they're actually moved to the next step, which is the Drone First Responder Program. Whereas, for instance, Chula Vista has hubs throughout their city, and when a call for service goes out, those drones get there before the officers and provide that overwatch for the officers. That's the next step.
Interesting.
Another, to answer your question, the cost has come down quite a bit, and the technology's improved. So that's been very helpful. And in taking our time and slowly researching this and finding out what best practices are, we were able to kind of skirt around some of the mistakes that other agencies made early on when this was brand-new technology.
Very good, and I was, well, not surprised, but I was interested to see that this is considered military equipment, which means, and which is interesting, because they can't, as I read the report, it can't be loaded with munitions, you don't ever arm them. It is strictly used for observing or looking for evidence or helping, assisting, et cetera. Help me understand why this is considered a military piece of equipment. By the state, I'm just, which means basically, if I understand, you have to come back every year and we have to authorize, or is it every other year?
Yeah, that's correct. Anything that's going to be included in the Military Act report has to come back up to be reaffirmed by council every year. When the creators of the legislation of AB 481 were determining what the parameters were gonna be and what was gonna be included, they thought that drones, which was new technology, should be included on that list. I think as we've said before, some of the things that are on there, we don't necessarily think are military equipment, but it is what it is, and it's not an issue for us to be transparent with what we're using in terms of precision policing tools.
Interesting, okay, I appreciate that. And so do I understand correctly, we don't actually, you mentioned you have two trained flight pilots, I guess, is that what their official term, which is great, but we've not actually used them in the field yet? We don't own any, correct? Or have they been trial and error? I'm just, what is the status?
So, we have, what, one practice drone right now?
We have a very small DJI Mini Mavic.
So we have a practice drone because part of vetting this out over the years is obviously getting some training. So the two pilots on the department go out in the open space area and have been learning how to fly the drones, learning all the technicalities with the legalities and how to use it, but we haven't used it in any policing actions at all. So it's merely just us not jumping in without getting some hands-on learning before we implement the full program. As you know, the Office of Emergency Services, the coordinator, reports directly to me, and it's kind of considered a separate department. That department does have drones, but those drones are for emergency management, you know, disaster assessment, special event management, but there's no law enforcement application to them. So what would be unique with this program, if you approve it, is that we will be using it in an enforcement standpoint. You know, getting to an incident, hopefully getting a global wide view of it and making it safer for the officers to operate, and hopefully getting offenders in custody faster.
Thank you, and I think I had just one final question, if that's all right. As I was reading the report, it was interesting that, obviously, when I think of these drones, they're being used in real time to observe things, but I gather that they are taking video the entire time, that they are up and coming down, and then that video is registered as evidence. Can you speak to how that can be accessed, how it is? I mean, I just want to be sure that people who might have privacy concerns understand how that's used and not used and destroyed or whatever.
Correct, and all that Commander Duncan talked about, the retention. But the best practice from other agencies that we've seen in our study has been that it does not video the entire flight from point A to point B. It doesn't record until it's over the actual incident that it's there to assist with.
And who turns on that video? Is it the, I understand there's an observer and there's a pilot. Is it the observer that, or is it, I mean, I'm sorry, this is just a curiosity, but it's kind of exciting.
No, great question, it's the pilot. On the controls, the actual controller that flies the drone, there's a button to record.
Got it, okay.
One of the things that you brought up earlier in your question about the development of a drone program and what things have progressed is, you know, it's one thing to have the vehicle itself in the air, you know, broadcasting a video signal to officers on the ground, that's one element. The other element is the backend management, the part that nobody sees, the complicated part, the time consumption of the users. Because what has happened over the years is laws have been developed behind this, policies have been developed, mistakes have been made and corrected, and these new policies that are in place and these laws that have been developed that we now have to follow, all of that has to do with the management of the drone program. So part of the package that we're seeking to obtain is the Axon Air. That's the management part. So much like the body-worn camera program, you have the cameras on the body, and they're taking videos, that's one aspect of it. The backend aspect of it is, you know, the iceberg underneath the tip, right? So to be a pilot, you have to have a pilot's license. And with a pilot's license on these drones, you have to have training, and your training expires, so there's a management of the pilots. Then there's management of the equipment, and then there's management of the flight logs, right? So every pilot has to have a flight log. Well, you know, with going with our contract with Axon, since they offer this as a product along with all the other services that they provide, is it makes it very simple for officers to get a drone in the air, use it, and then bring it back down and put it away. And all the flight log, all the labor-intensive stuff that has to go on with a pilot recording their activities is all done automatically, right? And we could call up at any other time the exact flight path of that vehicle with precision because of the GPS use. Video is retained in evidence.com as evidence and is only accessible to us on a need-to-know, right-to-know, need-to-know basis. And it could be available to other persons under subpoena, which is part of our practice. So, but to answer your question on that, the backend part, the management part, handles all of that stuff that normally you won't see other than, you know, the bird being in the air, so to speak.
And for more specific clarity, if we got any requests in like Public Records Act requests or subpoenas, we would treat it the way we do any other law enforcement video or audio requests that come in, and so it'd be analyzed under that same gamut. There's no difference, because it's still law enforcement video.
Got it, okay, very good, thank you.
That system also, and I just want to add to that because I don't- That system also, and I just want to add to that because I don't want to get in the weeds to the backend of the system, but I think, you know, electronically, we share body-worn camera footage, photos and digital evidence with the DA's office. Having an all-in-one solution like Axon also allows us to share with prosecutors and also through PRAs that are going through the city attorney's office, share when we lawfully are required to.
Very good.
Mayor Pro Tim Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one operational question, one procedural question. In terms of capability of a drone, and I was intrigued by your finding lost hikers thing, is there any payload capacity in these where it could deliver a cellphone or water or something to someone that we couldn't get to right away?
There is. With some of the larger and more expensive drones, they do have that capacity to drop a cellphone, no ordinance, but cellphone, water, or essentials, let's say, some type of bandage or something needed by someone that was stranded.
Excellent.
Some of the larger ones can do that. The entry-level drones can't.
Okay. Then the procedural question, I read the operations manual, and it looked like we didn't invent any language, that it was all language taken from best practices and FAA guidelines. Is there any of our own stuff that we have put in there?
Other than localizing it, not really. It came from multiple agencies and best practices from all those agencies.
And that was kind of the point I was getting at, which is, other people have made their mistakes and it got fixed, and now we're jumping on board. So.
Correct. We're fortunate enough to be regionally located where we can really benefit from some of the agencies that have really, really set a strong foundation on precision policing tools, LPRs, real-time cameras, 911 Live. And so I think we're just fortunate that Santa Monica and Beverly Hills are close. They obviously have a big volume of issues to deal with there on a daily basis, and so the agencies are certainly willing to assist us, and we certainly learn from their wins and their losses.
You just reminded me of the other capability question on the types of cameras. Are we looking for just high-res video, or is there infrared? Or what are the capabilities of being able to see things?
Yes. So the drones do come with thermal imaging. The larger drones have a better zoom option, better cameras, and there is a little more clarity to those, but they do get a little more expensive. And something else, even on the entry-level drones, when we talk about the missing hikers or lost hikers, even the small drones that can't necessarily carry a payload can be equipped with a spotlight or a speaker, whereas you can relay to them, hey, help is on the way. And you can basically, hey, if you're injured, wave your hand, and they could give you the directions that you could capture. So you can actually give commands and listen to those commands, not necessarily drop any type of payload, but the larger ones can. But at least you can have some type of communication with that person as well.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you. It's quick and easy. Can you explain whether this is going to be an ancillary position and/or how much time are we going to be expected for our officers to be involved with this?
Yes, so this would be, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, an ancillary assignment under the umbrella of the Technical Services Team, which has the room to house this operation. There would have to be a selection up to about, I think we talked, we're between five to 10 pilots in an ancillary-type role. But the ultimate goal is this needs to be a patrol bureau-focused tool that we envision conceptually deploying these from the back of the trunks. It doesn't make sense to have 10 pilots that are all in the office all the time. We want these mobile, out in the field, to help the officers out in the field. So good mix, ancillary assignment. And there would be, and I tell everybody, even if granted and we're allowed to start this program, let's say tomorrow, there's still going to be about a 30-day lead-in to train people up and to get the equipment, to get everybody operational.
Councilmember Judge.
Whenever we're done with questions.
You go ahead and make your motion.
Thank you. I move to adopt Resolution Number 2024-11, approving Simi Valley Police Department's policy statement regarding the use of surveillance technologies and an operational policy manual regulating the unmanned aerial systems program for police department, and approve the purchase of UAS devices as required by AB 481 and the City of Simi Valley Ordinance Number 1342.
Second.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 10A, City Council
Councilmember Litzler.
Thank you, Mayor. Lots of great things happening in our city the last couple of weeks, just to share a few of my things that I was privy to. On Tuesday, April 23rd, I attended the Town Center Merchant Meeting in the morning. Appreciate all the things that they're doing to try to make that entity thrive and attract customers, everything from special Mother's Day events to farmer's market that's materializing on Friday evenings. Actually, I was surprised by a lovely little presentation they gave me for being the emcee for their Easter Bunny Gathering. So they gave me a picture doing the bunny hop with kids. Anyway, but I appreciate all the different things they're doing there. Friday, April 26th, it was actually fun to attend several different events. In the morning, I attended the ribbon cutting for Gigabit Now, which is significant because this was the ribbon cutting to recognize the very first home that is powered by this high-speed internet line that's being placed all over our city, the fiber. And of course, Brian can correct me if I'm wrong, but half of our city now has high-speed fiber that's being laid, and there's eight more sections left that, one at a time, are being, well, anyway, it will be completed within a couple of years. Is that probably the timeframe?
They're roughly 18 months away.
Okay. Which is, and so if you see that you have lines laid in front of your home, you may or not be able, actually, likely, you're not quite yet able to access. This is the very first quadrant that has gone live, which happens to be right near us, right, south of Alamo, excuse me, south of, yes, Alamo, right behind kind of the shopping center area, et cetera. But it was exciting to, that Gigabit Now powered their very first home, and so it is coming to use soon. So that was fun to be there for that ribbon cutting. Also in the afternoon, I attended the Rancho Simi Arbor Day, where the Busy Hands Garden Club, for, in fact, have been in existence longer than the city has been a city, raising funds to plant trees in our community. And so I have to commend them for their efforts to continually provide trees. There were three trees that were planted at the Sycamore Park area, anyway, beautiful, three beautiful trees, and they raised the funds, and Rancho Park's district has actually placed them in partnership. But I want to thank that organization that has lasted longer than our city, and of course, we have a tree designation, and I'm sure their efforts have supported that in many ways. I did drive by the planting that was taking place to recognize Rancho Simi Earth Day at a royal, the park that's over by, in the Greek track. It is the Royal Park. Anyway, some beautiful flowers are planted there, and it looked like a wonderful celebration for Arbor Day. That was on Friday, April 26th. I will say, on Sunday, April 28th, I had the honor of attending the Eagle Court of Honor for Nolan Ironhill. Great work being done in the scouting program there at Peter Clavier Catholic Church, just a great, I think it was Troop 981, I'm doing that by memory, I hope I got close, but just some great leaders. In fact, they had the leaders stand up there, and I think there were as many leaders as there were young people who were part of that troop. But great storied history. In fact, one of the gentlemen there received his eagle in 1960, I believe, and he was still there being part of the scouting program. So hats off to, thank you for all of our community members that are involved in scouting and doing great things for our young people. Monday, April 29th, I attended the Lou Roth Awards, where we recognized, where the Simi Valley Education Foundation recognized outstanding efforts of educators and classified, and basically there are six, seven different categories. I will mention that the Lifetime Achievement Award was given to Mr. Dr. Steve Petrolingo, who is, who will be retiring this year and sorely missed when he leaves the school district. But it was just many great people recognized there. May 2nd and May 3rd, I had the privilege of attending the SCAG Regional Conference out in Palm Desert. Of course, I was joined there, or I joined, I should say, Mayor Pro Tim Rocky Rhodes, Councilmember Mike Judge, and of course, Mayor Pro Thomas, the four of us were there in attendance. There were, yes, and Councilmember DeeDee Kavanaugh was here making sure the city was in good hands. So thank you, DeeDee, appreciate, someone had to do it. Actually, I will say that that May 2nd was the National Day of Prayer, and I want to thank those who came and prayed for guidance and support of our elected officials here at City Hall. So I want to recognize those who participated in that National Day of Prayer, and sorry that I wasn't here for that, but we were, again, in Palm Desert. One of my, of course, we attended various sessions. One of the takeaways on one of the sessions I attended spoke about the electrification of vehicles and where that was all headed. It was a whole conversation of how the state pays for keeping up with their road improvements when gasoline disappears and there's no longer a gas tax. And a very, I'm, of course, very, I'm still not sure that this is all going to occur in the timeframe that the state believes is going to occur, but I will say it was an interesting conversation about what will have to happen to replace the gas tax, which may be a vehicle miles traveled tax, et cetera, toll taxes. We will see how that all evolves. Yes, I, we'll see. Anyway, but it was a very interesting, very interesting conference that we attended, and appreciate the thoughts there. And then I spent the weekend to meet my brand-new grandson, number five, up in Utah, and he is adorable. So hats off to Mr. Jackson Litzler. But, and that ends, and I will say, I'm sorry, that is why I missed the street fair. I understand it was phenomenal on Saturday. So I thank you for all those that put that together. But that concludes my report.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
I was nowhere near as busy as Councilmember Litzler, I can tell you that. Actually, I was very busy with work. I was out of town both weeks, a couple of days. But on Thursday, April 25th, I had the pleasure of attending the 50 Women in Business put on by the Pacific Coast Business Times up in Santa Barbara. It was an award dinner and cocktails and such. It was a great event, and one of the reasons I went is my boss was one of the ones that was recognized. So that was very, very nice to have her recognized for all that she's done in the banking industry. And then the only other thing I did, I missed the street fair because I had to attend my grandson getting his gray belt in jujitsu. He's four and a half, and he got a gray belt. Don't know how that works, but he was very excited about that. So, exactly. So he was very excited about that. So those were my only two things. So over the last two weeks, I actually tried to relax a little bit, and I'm sorry I missed your conference, but next time.
Councilmember Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, May 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, I was at the SCAG Regional Conference in Palm Desert, along with other council members, listening to some interesting programs, mostly about transportation, electrification of our state. Saturday, May 4th, I attended the street fair. I was there most of the day, mostly at the Elks booth with the police foundation across from me, along with our police department's booth across from them. It was a great day. It looked like it was a very good crowd. I was hoping Kathy would be able to tell us whether they did well. I'm thinking they did, even though the weather wasn't optimal. And that's the end of my report.
Mayor Pro Tim Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After the last council meeting, I got on a plane and left for China. On April 30th, at least in the LA time zone, I had a Zoom call with the CFO from the Clean Power Alliance to review three contracts that they asked the directors to vote on that were redacted, and so I get to peek behind the redactions. I wish other of the directors would join me in that quest of trying to vote on things that you can actually read. Upon returning to LAX on the 1st, we drove straight to the SCAG Regional Council meeting without my cellphone, because my cellphone's still in China. But happy to report, the $1,300 stupid tax later, I have a new cellphone, and it's chaotic. But I got to Palm Desert and attended the SCAG Regional Conference meeting and the General Assembly. During that meeting was also the Clean Power Alliance meeting. I attended with several other directors. I did vote to approve the new rate strategy, which keeps Simi Valley, since we've chosen the rate of lean, rate category of lean, we're still 1% under Edison cost. And so that strategy is still working for us. Those that are in the clean category are paying more for clean from Clean Power Alliance than from Edison. So remember, you were all opted in on the Clean Power Alliance. You can opt out if you would like. I also stated my objection during that meeting to the Clean Power Alliance supporting some legislation that would have our city have to include a specific plan for electrification, and I think that's busy work for the city, and we can handle that without the state telling us we need to. Saturday, May 4th, I attended, in the morning, I attended the kickoff of the 9th Annual Sergeant Ron Heelis Ride for the Blue. They support the mental health of first responders, and it was a great, emotional, fun, festive kickoff, and I'm glad that I was there to see them take off loud and exciting. I went from there to the 37th Annual Brownie Olympics at Royal High School, and I didn't know what I was getting into, and it's cute as heck. All a bunch of kids running around doing obstacle courses and different things, and they just have a great time, and there was 221 competitors in attendance. So it was really fun there. And from there, I wandered up to the street fair and spent some time wandering the booths and saying hello to folks. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you. All right, let's see here. Thursday, April 25th, attended the Tourism Alliance meeting, and I will say that after presenting to the council last time and having much greater attendance at this meeting, there seemed to be a lot of real positive energy, and I thought it was a good sign on where we're headed. Let's see here. That got canceled. And then, May 2nd and 3rd, I attended the SCAG Regional Conference and annual meeting. The annual meeting was about, I think, what, 10 minutes long? It was all a matter of three votes and it was over. But the breakout sessions I found interesting. I attended three. Two of them I thought were really good, made lots of notes that I plan on collecting my thoughts on and then trying to see what I can do with those. And the third one, I was a little lost, and it didn't work for me. But it was, all in all, it was good, and got a chance to spend some, you know, time with our fellow council members. That was enjoyable. That is it for me. So I am going to call for any future agenda items?
I have one.
I have one, too.
Okay, so Councilmember Judge.
I would just like to request that the city light our Civic Center sign in blue during the week of Police Memorial Day. the week of Police Memorial Day.
And Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In several of the, in different capacities, in different roles that I have, I've heard two different presentations on the coming of AI in our city, and so I would like to get a report on how we're currently using AI and what kind of parameters we're going to put around the implementation of AI. And it is my understanding we're already using it, and that, that causes me pause.
Not officially using it, I think, is, is.
That's correct.
But maybe individuals are, so maybe that's the reason for the discussion.
I think we're behind time getting a policy in place that, that tells us how we're going to implement AI if we're bringing it in to the city on purpose.
We can put a memo together to, for the council to take a look at, and then we can decide where to go from there.
There's no vote or anything, correct? Then in that case, I am going to adjourn this meeting in memory of LA County Deputy Sheriff Alfredo Flores, and I'm going to adjourn this meeting in memory of Nicholas James Militello, Todd Militello's father. Thank you, everybody. Good night, have a nice evening.